All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you all for being with us. Let's call the meeting to order. All right, let's take a quick look at our agenda for the briefing meeting. We're going to have a COVID update. We're going to have some information about the septic system repair program concept. We're going to discuss an easement, utility easement. We're going to discuss a small business employee downtown parking access concept and the kickoff of the DFI work on the county-owned properties. Are there any other items people would like to discuss at the briefing meeting today? Very good. Then we will consider this our agenda for the briefing meeting. Are there any questions about any items on the agenda for the meeting at five o'clock? Great. Okay, let's get started then with the COVID update. And Stacy Saunders is here to help us with this item.
Thank you so much for having me. It's good to see all of you all. So I am here today to give you an update on COVID-19 information and provide a brief monkeypox update at the end. And so let's get started with the COVID-19 update. So our last COVID-19 update was in June. I'm going to stop for just a second and let comms know that we're not seeing... There we go. Thank you. Our last update was in June. And you can see now from our EPI curve, since that time, we've been in a moderate level of COVID-19 illness in our community. Not quite as high as previous COVID-19 surges, but also not returning to a very low baseline. This wave has been relatively constant and with a level cases over the summer and the last four weeks showing a consistent week-over-week decline, which you can see at the very end. Our current case rate is 132 per 100,000. This is a decrease from previous week of 149 per 100,000. Additionally, early indicators that we use, like our COVID-like illness surveillance, have also been decreasing across the state with Region Six, which is the region that we are in, experiencing a consistent week-over-week decline for several weeks now. Our hospitalization data, it has remained relatively low during this COVID-19 wave. This particular wave has been fueled by the more transmissible BA4 and BA5 subvariants. And while far more contagious, these cases are not translating to higher rates of hospitalizations, severe illness and death, as we've seen somewhat of an increase, but not nearly as high as previous waves and surges. Deaths have remained slowed and remain low week over week. However, we have lost 636 of our neighbors in COVID-19-related deaths so far. With case rates falling and hospitalizations remaining low, the community level for Buncombe County right now is low or green. At this community level, we recommend that individuals stay up to date on their vaccines and seek testing if they have symptoms. Later, I will share some additional recommendations for folks to stay prepared for future COVID waves and surges. I did want to spend a little bit of time updating you on our COVID-19 operations around vaccine testing and outreach. Buncombe County residents have committed to protecting each other and themselves through vaccination. To date, 70% of our total population has received at least one dose of vaccine, with 67% completing their primary series and almost 45% receiving an additional or booster dose. There is exciting news, and I'm sure you have heard about it, that we do have now available, following the FDA authorization and the CDC approval of recommendations for their use from the Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices. We do have updated vaccine boosters. The updated boosters provide better protection against the BA4 and BA5 subvariants that currently are causing most cases of COVID-19 in the U.S. The updated boosters are recommended for those who have completed their primary series or initial booster at least two months ago. Specifically, Pfizer's updated booster is recommended for those who are 12 years of age and older. And Moderna's updated booster is for those who are 18 years and older. Buncombe County HHS began administering both updated vaccine boosters today. And many other vaccine providers have started today, including pharmacies and other area providers. Vaccines have and will continue to help us reduce COVID-19 in our community, protect us from severe illness, and prevent deaths. Folks can find their preferred vaccine provider and consider... Please consider getting your vaccine today. You can check out the DHHS website, for providers who are providing all vaccines. While the highly contagious COVID-19 variants are circulating in our state, it remains very important to quickly identify when you have COVID-19 so you can help stop the spread to others. As mentioned, in June, the state sunsetted their state-supported testing vendor partnership. However, Buncombe County HHS has executed a local partnership with the testing vendor StarMed to continue offering community testing at the Asheville Mall location. Community testing is available at the mall every Monday and Friday from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Surge capacity has been included in that local partnership so that StarMed can rapidly increase access to testing should we see an exponential rise in cases that warrants this. In addition, Buncombe County HHS has partnered with StarMed to provide at-home test kits to community members who visit their Asheville Mall site. And then speaking of the at-home test kits, there are several other options for folks to receive at-home test kits through the mail. Individuals can visit the covid19.ncdhhs.gov/testing-treatment to review all those options. I've listed some of them on the screen. You can also find test-to-treat information on that site and locations where you can get tested and treated. And if treatment is recommended for you, get the prescription then. I did want to give you some update on our outreach operations. Buncombe County HHS remains committed to outreach with equity. Our mobile team has been established with the mission to serve our community through outreach in our historically marginalized communities, low-income populations and rural areas. The six-member team has successfully been hired. Since forming in June of 2022, the team has provided 11 COVID vaccine events with partners including the Mexican Consulate, Disability Partners, and the North Carolina Black Alliance Health Fair. Additionally, the team has provided COVID testing and vaccination to our detention staff and detainees. And you can see further details there. Vaccinating over 280 vaccines administered and over 220 tests collected. I did also want to mention that September is National Preparedness Month. I would like to welcome our new Public Health Preparedness Officer, Nathan Green, to Buncombe County HHS into the incredible work of public health. Today looks a lot different than when we started the public health response for COVID-19 in 2020. Today, we know more. We have better tools like vaccine and are learning to adapt with life with COVID-19 still among us. This means staying prepared for future waves and surges of COVID-19. Buncombe County HHS has some simple ways for everyone to stay prepared, stay up to date on vaccines, know your testing locations, have at-home test kits available, keep masks available for times of higher transmission, and identify locations for treatment if eligible ahead of time. I'm going to switch gears for a moment and give you a quick update on monkeypox. As you're aware, we have, in addition to having COVID-19, public health is responding to a concurrent global outbreak of monkeypox. This data is as of yesterday. Globally, there are over 53,000 cases that have been identified. In the U.S., we have confirmed almost 20,000 cases. North Carolina makes up almost 350 of those cases. And Buncombe County has now identified six cases of monkeypox. Monkeypox is not a new disease. We've actually known about it for decades. It is endemic in other parts of the world. We've even had previous outbreaks of the disease in the U.S. However, this is the largest outbreak to date. Prior to ever having the first case of monkeypox in North Carolina, Buncombe County HHS was preparing and had already activated our incident command system to organize our monkeypox response, including communications, testing, and vaccine. While the data suggests right now in the outbreak, most cases are occurring in gay, bisexual, and other men who have sex with men, or MSM, I want to underscore that anyone can get monkeypox, as proven by the known history of monkeypox in other countries and other outbreaks. Everyone should know the signs and symptoms and that testing is available. If you have been exposed to a known or suspected case of monkeypox or you have unexplained sores, blisters, and bumps on your body, see a healthcare professional. Testing is available throughout the state and in our community. Medical professionals should test anyone with unexplained sores or lesions, including those outside of our MSM community so that we can stay ahead of the spread of the virus. Just like COVID-19, rapid detection through testing is needed to stop the spread of this disease. And what you're seeing there is just a map of the state of North Carolina showing the distribution of cases as of yesterday. Effective vaccine is available for those who are a close contact to a known or suspected case and others who meet criteria. As I said, anyone can get monkeypox. And at this point in the outbreak, the data is telling us that our gay, bisexual, and other men who have sex with men, neighbors, friends, and family are disproportionately impacted right now and have higher risk. That's why public health has been and continues to prioritize our MSM neighbors, especially with the limited vaccine supply. Vaccine criteria focuses on those with the highest risk. Beginning tomorrow, September 7th, that criteria will be expanding. And I'll talk about that in just a little bit. Vaccine helps prevent illness and reduces the risk of severe illness... Reduce... I'm sorry. Reduces the risk of severe illness. It is one tool, just like testing, to help reduce the spread of disease. Buncombe County HHS is serving as a monkeypox vaccine hub for western North Carolina. This means that we receive shipments of vaccine, that we store, that we also administer, and that we can transfer to other providers in the area. As of last week, Buncombe County HHS has received 1,430 vials of vaccine. We have transferred a little over 350 vials to other providers in the area. And in addition, we have administered almost 1,100 doses of vaccine through our health department clinic and our outreach efforts. Our outreach efforts have been very successful because we have worked with and listened to our LGBTQI-plus community organizations offering vaccines at clubs, venues, and other events that are trusted spots for those highest at risk. Our mobile team has added monkeypox response to their line of service in addition to COVID testing and vaccine. To date, they have held six outreach events with three more scheduled in the coming weeks. And this includes our participation in the Blue Ridge Pride events at the end of this month. This map here shows the distribution of vaccine administration throughout the state. I apologize for how very busy this slide is, but it has some information on here that is very important. Our monkeypox communication has been very clear and focused on three main points: get checked, get tested, and get protected. As mentioned earlier, the vaccine criteria will be expanding tomorrow and will include anyone who has had close contact in the past two weeks with someone who has been diagnosed with monkeypox. That has not changed. Gay, bisexual, or other men who have sex with men, or transgender individuals who are sexually active. Number three is the point that has changed. The most people who have had sexual contact with gay, bisexual, or other men who have sex with men, or transgender individuals in the past 90 days, or people living with HIV or taking medication to prevent HIV, which we call PrEP, or who were diagnosed with syphilis in the last 90 days. So that is expanding that criteria for eligibility. In closing, I just want everyone to be prepared now and in the future. Be prepared for COVID-19 waves. As I said, stay up to date on your vaccine, get tested, and have at-home test kits available. Don't throw away your mask, but keep some handy for times when cases are much higher and know where you can receive treatment if eligible. And as we continue to experience a concurrent outbreak of monkeypox, learn the facts. Anyone can get monkeypox. It does spread through close skin-to-skin contact. Look for rashes on yourself, on others, and locate testing and vaccine for yourself or for your community. Talk to your doctor or your local health department. You can always call us if you have questions. We're happy to answer those for folks. Limited vaccine is prioritized for those currently most at risk, but that is, as we just saw, that criteria is changing over time as we get more vaccine. And I just want to make sure that everybody is aware that testing is available, vaccine is available. And thank you so much for your time today. Please let me know if you have questions.
I have one question regarding COVID vaccines. I believe I'm correct in saying it's been maybe 10, 12 months since a large segment of our population has been eligible for a booster. Is there a kind of a single source of truth? People can go to see, I guess, when they should get a shot in relation to their most recent natural occurring COVID infection? If there's a time period they should wait in between those two things?
In between when they...
Were infected with COVID-19?
Oh, I see. So like if they had a recent infection? So you want to be recovered first? That's first and foremost. If you have any questions about, you know, how long should I wait? You can always talk to your doctors. You can call us too. But be recovered, and then, you know, if you have finished your primary series and it's been at least two months since you finished your primary series or your last booster, then you're eligible for the newly formulated bivalent booster at this time. If you are recently recovering and have never been vaccinated, now is the time to start your primary series.
Stacy, thanks for the presentation. I just have one question. You know, with the widespread availability of home testing kits and, you know, just how commonplace people have become accustomed to using those if they're concerned they might have COVID symptoms. Do you have any kind of high-level thoughts about, like, when we show the data that we have today, whereas, you know, say, a year ago, people would go to some facility, right? And get tested and then get emailed the results and all of that information became incorporated into the data? But, you know, just my anecdotal sense is that a lot of people just test, and if they have COVID, they quarantine, you know, they deal with it. But they don't necessarily take a step to notify, you know, a public health agency. So how much confidence do we have in, like, the COVID number of cases in the community, for example, in light of the... Which is a very good thing, you know, the widespread availability of convenient home testing for COVID?
Thanks for that question. So there's a reason we look at lots of different indicators. But yes, early on, our primary way of getting tested was through community or through medical providers, which are all reportable. So we were getting lots and lots of nurses, but still under-reporting because still not everybody was going to a community or a healthcare provider. So we've never had the truest, like, the true number. And so now with the use of at-home test kits, most certainly, we are not seeing the true magnitude. So what we really focus on, when I look at the numbers, I focus less on the actual number itself and more the trend over time. So even though there's less testing now, we can still see a trend over time. We saw it with BA4 and BA5, that there was a very moderate and consistent level of cases for a few months, actually. Almost moderate and slow. That area underneath that curve was quite broad. Now, after four or five weeks, we are seeing that come down. And so we are seeing less cases or less new cases come into that. So that's one thing, but that's not the only thing we look at. So we continue to look at hospitalizations, and more so, we continue to look at those early indicators of, like, COVID-like illness and the wastewater surveillance, which was a really, like, super-new tool for us. And over time, I've gotten much more comfortable with looking at that and what does it tell us? Caveats for us using that in our areas is that we are very tourist-driven and folks come into our community a lot to spend time here for recreation, for vacation, but don't stay with us. And so they may be contributing to that wastewater data, but their case, if they become symptomatic, we're not going to see that in our case data ever. But it is one piece of data that we can use. So the COVID-like illness surveillance, which tells us, you know, that early indicator of folks who might be having COVID-like symptoms and seeking care, that helps us understand what the potential for transmission and circulation is. And then, of course, like I said, the hospitalizations give us an idea of how severely ill are people. And so what we're seeing is that even in that moderate time of BA4, BA5 transmission, which we are still in, though lower than what we were a few weeks ago, we're not seeing the same level of severe illness and hospitalizations and deaths that we saw previously. So we don't look at one piece of data to answer your question. That's why we look at all of those pieces of data to help inform us the most because we know over time, our tools have changed and folks are relying on different tools, including at-home testing.
My one other question is, thank you. Is... Do we have any way of knowing or have some sense of, you know, with the... Of course, we're encouraging people to get vaccinated and boosted. There's also the antiviral medications that people can take, or at least some people can take if they develop COVID. Do you have any sense for what percentage of folks who do test positive for COVID end up utilizing it? If it's, like, very common or still kind of, you know, rather uncommon for, you know, older persons or people with some other health issues that they're concerned about? Or is it quite common that people use it if they are experiencing some, you know, or concerned they're going to experience, you know, some level of serious illness?
That's a great question. I do not have that data. I will go back and see if I can find that, if that does exist, if we've got any type of idea of what percentage of COVID positives do utilize treatment or if we have some utilization data, just period. What we do know, at the time when treatment was coming more readily available, is that we estimated that about 2/3 of our population in North Carolina would be eligible based on underlying health conditions. But I'll see if I can find data for you about utilization.
Okay. That's great. I think, you know, just anecdotally, I think that there's a lot of people who aren't sure about whether they might, you know, whether they should potentially take it if they've tested positive. So I think it's just an area where, I don't know, some further education and, you know, around, you know, if you're in these kind of situations, then yeah, it's completely appropriate. If you're interested, then, you know, ask your doctor about it or, you know, feel free to... Because I don't think people have a sense of, you know... You know, if you're not older or have some, like, definite, you know, significant health characteristic that might make you more vulnerable, then you shouldn't do it. I mean, so anyway, I'm just... Appreciate any additional information on that.
Yeah, I'll see what I can find out for you.
All right. Commissioners, any other questions? All right. Stacy, thank you so much.
Thanks so much for the time.
All right. Next item is the septic system repair program. And Jessica Silver and Bob Haynes are here to help us out with this item.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for having Bob and I come before you to present details of the septic repair program. We're going to start briefly by going over what a septic system is. A septic system is a way... A system that is designed to collect and filter wastewater from homes or other buildings that do not have access to a municipal sewage supply. And in the diagram, you see there are some main components to a septic system. You have the septic tank, which collects and stores and filters out the waste. And that the liquid waste is eventually dispersed from that septic tank, septic tank, I'm sorry, into the drain field. And eventually, it... The wastewater, the liquid portion of it, is going to be filtered out through the soil and make its way back into the groundwater supply. Or it will evaporate and go back into the natural water cycle. The purpose of a septic system is to prevent the spread of disease and to protect the public health from sewage contaminating groundwater supplies and drinking water supplies. So why do septic systems fail? Septic systems fail for various reasons. Sometimes people use too much water. The system can be inundated and cause it to not work properly. System integrity can be compromised. What we see often, people will build over portions of their septic system either knowingly or unknowingly. They may create a driveway or put a gazebo. We see lots of things in our office. Sometimes even vegetation is allowed to overgrow over the drain field area and the roots will go into the drain lines and disrupt the water, the natural water flow. There's also lack of septic, of system maintenance. And what's... Sorry. System maintenance is the pumping of the septic tank every three to five years. That can lead to the system failing. There's also improper usage. That is considered if people are pouring grease down their sink drains, that could lead to failure along with flushing things that should not be flushed. As an FYI, the only thing that should be flushed is toilet paper. Cleaning chemicals can take out some of the good bacteria that's in your septic tank. Cleaning chemicals can take, take out some of the good bacteria that's in your septic tank and replace it with bacteria that don't necessarily help break down the solid material. So that can lead to failure. And then there's also the age of the system. When, when septic systems are designed, we design them with a repair in mind because we know all things, you know, all things have the possibility of, of failing. So what does a septic system failure look like? How would we know if a system was failing? You would know because you could see waste backing up into the structure, either into the home or into the building, into the plumbing fixtures. You could also see sewage surfacing on the ground outside above the drain lines. Another way, uh, this really technically isn't a septic system failure, but people do straight pipe some portions of their wastewater. Mostly, we see people straight piping their washing machine gray water into a gravel bed that is illegal. And what we try, we do try to address that. We do address that when we see that. So why are repairs not completed? Repairs in general are very costly. They can range anywhere from $500 per repair up to $21,000, just depending on what type of system you are required to install or if it was just a system component that you're replacing or the entire system that needs to be replaced. Other things that we've seen that delay repairs from being installed is the workload of inspectors and contractors. We are still experiencing a backlog of, of permits that are out. Contractors are out days, even private industry, so licensed soil scientists are out three to, um, three, up to three months. So the other issue that causes septic repairs to not be installed is supply chain issues. If contractors cannot get the material to perform the installation, which we did see that a lot during the height of COVID. And then, when all else fails and, um, people, homeowners, property owners do not repair their systems, what environmental health does is go through, it's a pretty lengthy legal process to try to get correction through the court system. Why is this program important? The septic repair program is important because any failure of a septic system can contaminate our drinking water supply, our groundwater supply. And that surfacing sewage can expose people and animals to various diseases. So it's important that they get resolved, they get repaired as soon as possible, considering all the constraints from the previous slide. So an overview of the program. As you all are aware, you've included $75,000 in this year's budget to address failing septic systems. And our intention is to have the program fund 100% of septic repair cost. According to our FY22 data, there are 98 repair permits that have not been installed and there are 20 notices of violation that may potentially benefit from this program. We will have an application available online that will be fillable. So people won't necessarily have to come in to make an, to, to apply for the program. Once we receive the applications, we'll use this selection criteria to determine who receives the assistance. The property, including the land and the home, must be owner-occupied for 12 months out of the year. Their income cannot exceed 80% of the area median income. The liquid reserve amount should not exceed 50% of the person's AMI, uh, of the person's income. The property owner should also receive three bids from contractors. They should try to get three bids from contractors and submit that with their application. Once environmental health verifies that the repair has been installed, we will notify permits and inspections, give them a copy of the operations permit. And permits and inspections will arrange to pay the contractor directly for their services. And another stipulation is the owner must occupy the home for three months, I'm sorry, for three years after the, after the repair has been installed. The county will have a diminishing lien placed on the property secured by a deed of trust. Other things that will help us determine which applications will receive the award once they meet the minimum qualifications. We'll look at the impact to human health. How is the system failing? Is it backing up into the home water quality? How close in proximity is the failure to a body of water? Is the sewage leak a constant leak or is it a slow leak? Or is it pouring like, like a faucet that's turned on? We'll look at the cost, what funds are available at the time. And then what history, what's the notice of violation history on the property? Either notices of violations that have been, notices of violation that have been issued by environmental health or NOVs from other departments. So what's our timeline? We're in the process of finalizing program documents. This meeting will help us, us do that once we get some feedback from you all. We have a list of property owners and addresses that may benefit from the program and we're going to work with communications on putting out messages to those 98 properties and those 20 NOVs that we talked, that I shared with you earlier. We will advertise the program in October and plan to have the application cycle open from November until the end of December. And the plan is to evaluate the applications in January to February and award, notify applicants in late February, early March, so construction can begin. Do you have any questions?
I got one question. Do you have a, I was thinking about the criteria. Do you have a sense, just a ballpark guess of the quantity of installers or repair businesses that can do this kind of work? Is it five? Is it 15 within our county or region?
I would say it's more than five, less than 50. But I can get you a, a number, an actual number. We do, the state puts out a weekly list of certified septic contractors and I can, I'm happy to provide that for you. We'd also provide that to the applicants to let them know who they can reach out to to request those bids.
Okay. I'd just be curious.
Yeah.
Thank you for bringing this together. I'm, I'm excited.
Sure.
Huge benefit to test out here.
Yeah. We've gotten some really good feedback from the state. They're asking for details of this program as well, once it's finalized. They like to duplicate it in other portions, so that's a great thing.
I agree. Thank you. And it seems very well thought out and it's definitely needed.
Definitely.
A question I've got. Repair means, what about the older places that, you know, are probably 50 years old? And now there's sewer available for them? Will this work into that, that they can use this money instead of a repair on a septic system to tie them to the MSD?
It is my understanding that this is just to repair septic systems only.
But with the cost being, you're saying what, 500 or 5,000 to $21,000? Wouldn't it be beneficial to work up some program for a tap fee of 2250 to, and not have to worry about this in the future?
That would be a great idea. The, my understanding going into it was to design the program around failing septic systems and repairing those septic systems. If you'd like, we could take a look at MSD. It would, we, we do have data available of all of the septic failures across the county or the outstanding repairs. We could map that with MSD's lines and make some comparisons to see if it's really available. Like, if MSD's lines are available at the portions of the county that have the most need. And then maybe do some cost analysis to see which one makes, you know, whether repairing the septic system or connecting an MSD, which one would be most cost-effective. But for the purpose of this program, I was only asked to do the septic repairs.
Yeah, okay. Well, I just looked like that, that 2250 tap fee would be a whole lot better than spending 5,000 of repairing something that could not be fixed, that might happen again, so. And with the Inca Cantler deal that really pushed for, is really a lot of these failing septics that we're seeing or that I hear about all the time are next to the creeks and rivers that we've got that we want to clean up anyway, so, just an idea.
So I want to get some clarity because you're right. Maybe it's cheaper to do the tap fee, but what about actually extending the line to the home? So I want to make sure that we would take a look at the full costs and we can bring that back to you guys to get clarification because sometimes the person leaves a distance and we have to connect the pipe all the way to the home. And that's the expensive part is why they haven't signed up for sewer. But we would take a look at the entire costs and then we'll do that cost-benefit analysis. And the, so my question to the board would be, would you want us to go ahead with the cheaper way or bring that back to you guys before we make a decision?
I would look at the cheapest way and the future of not having a problem.
Seems like there's.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Jessica.
May I interject just a moment? I just want to make sure that everyone is aware that we do experience failures in the connection from MSD's line to a person's home and that person is still responsible for making that repair on that line. So that, just because they connect to MSD does not mean that they would never have another failure of sewage coming, surfacing on the ground. And the MS, that is the homeowner's responsibility to repair that supply line. So I want to make sure we all have that level of understanding.
I understand that. That's the same.
As the water department, your main lines there, you're responsible from that line back to your house. So, I mean, it could be put in the writing that, hey, here's an option you have. If you can get to the tap, then our repair fee or what we would pay would be to pay for the tap right there.
I guess, Avril, my feedback was, you know, I think I, I like Commissioner Presley's logic there. It seems like, perhaps, I'm just thinking out loud, out loud here, but we could build the program to where we are mapping these, these potential projects and looking to see the distance, linear feet distance from an existing MSD line. And perhaps, perhaps we also have to build in some sort of cost-benefit analysis between two options. So I, I guess, Avril, my feedback is that looking at some sewer connection layer to this program seems appropriate.
I think Commissioner Presley's suggestion is really good as well. And so I think when we were, we were, you know, we were talking about this idea some in the Energy and Environment Subcommittee. And I think it's, it originated out as, you know, the problem is failing septic systems. And in a lot of cases, it may be the solution is to fix the septic system. But if, if you can tap into MSD at the same price or less, I think in general, that is the preferable solution environmentally and for the, the resident too. So, so if it isn't a location where that's feasible, I would certainly think if you could do MSD for the same or less, that, that we would want to allow them to choose that option. Yeah.
Good. Thank you.
My, my, my other question was, um, the septic system might have a minor repair, 500 bucks, or it may be completely need to be rebuilt, 20,000 bucks. We're just starting this, but y'all have any kind of like initial ballpark sense for, I mean, this is not a, in the context of a big county, this is not a lot of funding. So we know it's not going to fix all these problems. But for an investment of 75,000, do you have any sense for like what the average cost might be? Just to kind of get a sense of, you know, we might be able to help out, you know, 10, 15, 20? Like, is, is the average going to be somewhere right in the middle or more on the high or lower end? Or what's your, is it just too, too early to tell?
We would certainly hope that the average would be on the lower end and not that $21,000 end. And that's why we would take a look at, look at the applications we receive and those who are, excuse me, who meet the minimum criteria. And then look at their three, their bids and say, okay, well, we have $75,000. What does it make, does it make sense for us to repair three? Or we can repair one big one and then do eight or nine smaller systems that won't cost, won't cost as much. So I guess the short answer to your question would be, it's too early to tell because it will, it will vary based on the applicants that we receive, the applications we receive and the types of repairs that are necessary.
Great. Well, I'm glad we're doing this and I think we'll hopefully learn, learn from it. Yeah, just one of the other, one of the other kind of questions, as we talked about this, that I had in my head was around whether, since, because right now, there's kind of no program really like this that's offered in the community, right?
Right.
And I wondered if maybe even the county, like, maybe being willing to offer some kind of cost share might help a lot of people, like, maybe they can't do all of it, but I could do half. And, and in that way, whatever money we put in would actually go twice as far. But there, there's, my sense is that there's probably still a lot of people who'd be like, I can't do that either. And so we're still just sort of stuck. But anyway, just since it's a new program, I would just encourage the staff to kind of keep an open mind to what's the best way to get the most accomplished with, with whatever amount of funding we can put in. And so maybe, maybe that's an idea to look at in the future, but I'm certainly supportive of the, the program that y'all have put forward. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thanks so much. Look forward to hearing more. All right. The next item is a discussion of a utility easement and Michael Free will present this item.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Nick, there we go. So out in Swananoa, Buncombe County owns two parcels of property. Buncombe County owns these properties. They were FEMA buyout properties about 20 years ago. We can't make any use of them except for passive use. So I've done a couple easements for people that wanted to graze their goats or cattle or horses on these properties, but we can't use them otherwise. This is a, if you go, that striped parcel is the temporary easement, the one with the line going through it, L1, L2, L4, that's the permanent easement request. Dominion Energy wants to put this well underneath the Swananoa River, like, at least 50 feet underneath it, so it doesn't get impacted again by another storm. They're willing to pay the county $80,000 for this temporary and permanent construction easement. If you can go to the next one, Nick, and just sort of give you an idea of where this is. So right now, they're both not used at all. And the lowest image shows that this is on old, uh, old Swan, old Highway 70, about a mile and a half west of Owen Middle School, which is down there in the bottom right-hand corner. So if there's no objections, I would propose to put this on the consent agenda for the board to consider on September 20th. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer.
Michael, I've got a question. Is this a, an existing gas line that they just want to bury under the river? Essentially replacing.
It's a relocation. It's a relocation. So there's not easement for this Dominion line in this current location now. I think it was following the riverbed. I'm not positive. But I think it, it has, has been impacted in the past by flood events.
So to your knowledge, it's not a new extension bringing new capacity from one place to another?
I do not know. I could find out and get that back to you.
I'd be interested in knowing that. I guess, Mr. Chairman, my, my opinion would be to oppose any new gas lines, new fossil fuel infrastructure of any kind in the county, whether it's on our property or not. That's my opinion.
Other questions or comments?
And I, just to clarify, Michael, so this property definitely, it cannot be built on or we cannot utilize it in any other way?
No, can't even put parking on there. I mean, you could park on it, but you can't approve it, you can't pave it, you can't make it impervious. There's no plans for any greenway to go along that route. I've heard of no plans to use this property at all, checking with Parks and Rec and with General Services.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and I, and I apologize if I missed something at the beginning of the, very beginning of the presentation too, but I think my question was similar to Commissioner Sloan's. This is an existing easement that Dominion has?
It is, it is a new easement.
It's a new easement, okay.
My understanding that it replaces, it's a line that replaces a current service, but I would need to double check for sure.
But the current line doesn't come through these two parcels. It comes through somewhere else in the area, but not these parcels.
Correct.
And they want to relocate it to this alignment?
Yes.
Okay.
Running southwest, northeast, across that middle image and have it fifty feet underground and under the riverbed.
Okay. And how wide is the easement?
I believe it's twenty feet.
Twenty feet. And I understand it's, because it's flood plain, there's not a lot you can, you know, contemplate in terms of...
It came with FEMA buyout dollars, so it's heavily restricted by the deed to the county.
Okay. But in terms of, with that understood, the, when someone builds a pipeline across the property, obviously, it restricts what you can do above it, right?
Yes, it does.
But generally, you could sort of still use the rest of your property as you could before, but you can't ever build anything on top of the easement.
Correct, no sheds, no structure. And I made sure to put that into the proposed easement, that they'd be consistent with the language contained in the prior deeds to the county with the restrictions.
Just out of curiosity, and this is just more of a, you know, just since this is on, 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 an issue in front of us, if, if a utility needs an easement to build a line like this, they, they, is there process to kind of request an easement and then if they can't get it to use eminent domain? I'm assuming that, some people would just say, I'm not interested, but they can still do that, right? Just like a transmission corridor or a DOT highway project?
That's exactly what they've done out near Inca Commerce Park and they did it down near Ferry Road. They put in new lines down there going north and south beside Brevard Road. There was, I don't know, a whole bunch of eminent domain actions filed and we...
As a utility company, they're authorized to do that as part of their process?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I don't have any other, any, any other questions at this time?
One question I'd have is, could this be part of the Duke Power of the, I guess, the circular line they're talking about that they, the Inca and the Ferry Road where it will circle, it's coming forty and then it comes twenty-six from South Carolina, fifty foot under, I mean, that's quite a bit under. I mean, I would be for it, go through there because we can't do nothing on the property anyway, right? And if it's part of the Duke Power, in case of damage done to the south end of the line that the north end continues to work?
Commissioner, I don't have the answer to that, but when I ask Commissioner Sloan's question, back to Vaughn and Melton, they're the contractor, I can try to find out. I know Dominion Energy's, they're in the midst of a, a heavy effort to improve the infrastructure in the area.
Okay.
If we could, if we could just get a little bit more information about the nature and purpose of the overall project this is part of, I think that would be, I think that'd be helpful.
We'll get that to you.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is the Small Business Employee Downtown, Downtown Parking Access Presentation, and Tim Love is going to present this. Thanks for being with us, Tim.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
We've got a presentation today that we'll walk through on, on this Cox Avenue Affordable Parking Program, so I'm going to start rebranding it from what we listed in the agenda. With me today is Lee Anderson. Lee manages the Cox Avenue Deck and so she's much more familiar with the details, operations, all that good stuff. So, if we get into that, we'll ask Lee to step up here. With all that said, today, we're here to talk about the Affordable Parking Program specific to Cox Avenue Parking Deck. Some of you may know that as the Sears Alley Deck or the parking deck that is adjacent to Forty Cox Avenue. Whoa. Backing up. So, our agenda, we'll do a little bit of background, why we're here, we'll talk about some basic options to address some of the issues we're seeing. With those options, we'll look at projected revenue as well as expenses. We'll talk a little bit about what an application process would be and then we'll talk about next steps. This is briefing, so we're not seeking any action from Commission, any vote, but definitely want your input today. There's a number of areas where there's some flexibility and would like your guidance. So, background and request, parking expenses are impactful to employees for those that have to pay for parking. Daily average parking expenses are about fifteen dollars a day and monthly leases start at about eighty-five dollars a month, but can be much higher in and around the downtown area. Those costs, when you extrapolate them over the course of a month, can be anywhere up to five hundred dollars a month and then over a year, you know, something like six thousand dollars. That, of course, varies based on where you park, how often you park, all that good stuff. So, with that said, you know, parking can be a significant percentage of an employee's expenses. And so, as an example, you know, just generalizing, employees in the personal care and services occupations, this is a Bureau of Labor Statistics designation, make a median wage of thirteen-fifty-seven an hour, which is about, you know, twenty-three hundred dollars a month. That's a median, so it could be more, it could be less. But if we assume that and then try to figure out how much of their income is going towards parking, if we look at it from a high perspective, a medium perspective and a low perspective, it's anywhere from five and a half percent on the high level down to about one percent, one point seven percent on the low level. And so, that's just a range, just trying to give you a sense of if you're making thirteen-fifty-seven, how much would a high parking expense of a hundred and thirty dollars a month versus a low parking expense of forty dollars a month impact you from an income perspective? And the point is, it's significant, anywhere from two to five and a half percent.
And that's if they're doing monthly parking. A lot of people, for whatever reason, maybe don't know about that option and so they're just kind of paying on a daily basis or things like that, in which case it could be even a lot higher.
You're absolutely correct. You know, our high option is a hundred and thirty dollars a month, but if the number five hundred dollars a month is accurate, then it's much, much more substantial. Simultaneously, we know the region, the nation, everyone is dealing with rising inflation, including the cost of housing as well as gas prices. So, this is all kind of coming together. So, today, wanted to present to the Commission some options, get some feedback from you. And so, we're requesting, you know, you review the options we presented, give us some guidance and then we'll come back at a future date to review with you. So, some potential options, staff have kind of talked about this a little bit. One option is to do nothing, maintain the current process, just kind of go as we've proceeded. Next option would be to look at reducing monthly lease rates across the board. And so, when I say across the board, that's for everyone. No eligibility requirements, just lower our existing eighty-five dollars a month to some other number, make it eligible to all. Our next option would be to reduce that monthly rate, but create some criteria and eligibility around low and moderate income individuals working in and around downtown. And so, we'll talk about the two options, we won't talk about option one because that's just our current scenario, but options two and three, we'll talk a little bit more in the subsequent slides. So, the proposed option to reduce monthly rates all across the board, we'll just describe that to you. So, it's as it sounds, just reduce the lease rate. Eligibility would be based on location, so since this is the Cox Avenue Deck, we're, we're seeking those employees of quote unquote downtown businesses. We say approximately one mile radius around Pack Square, that's not, doesn't have to be exact, but that gives us a good sense of quote unquote downtown. On the income side, no requirements, we're just leaving it open-ended. And then, from an industry perspective, we're saying that all employees of any industry are eligible, but we're encouraging certain industries to apply. And in this example, we're talking about retail, restaurant, hospitality, et cetera, but anyone working downtown would have access to this program. The reduced rate...
Tim, before we leave that scenario, just, I just want to make sure, I think I'm, I got this, but just to make sure. So, we, we say for all, but we mean all employees. So, you do have to be employed in the downtown area to be eligible. So, if you were, lived in a, if you're a resident downtown but didn't have a job downtown, this is, this is focused on workforce.
That's correct. This is a workforce tailored program, for sure.
Got it, thanks.
The reduced rate, we'll talk about in the subsequent slide when we show you how the numbers fall out, but it would be reducing the current Cox Avenue from eighty-five dollars to a new number, which is something we can talk about and flex. The location, again, we're talking about Cox Avenue. Additional decks to be considered in the future, Buncombe County, of course, owns the Two Hundred College Street Deck, different demographic and for how that's used in business operations, so we wanted to separate that rather than mixing apples and oranges. And then, our third bullet, based on our discussions with Preferred Parking, that's our vendor of both decks, actually, their request was to not have any designated parking areas, to just have parking be parking. We, of course, preserve, you know, accessible spots for those that need them, but generally speaking, just let it be wide open, not a distinction of who parks where and when and what times. Their theory on this is, it's just, there's an administrative burden to sort of, you know, policing that quote unquote in the deck, but there's also kind of a, an inadvertent negative benefit because, you know, their main enforcement mechanism is to provide, you know, a ticket. And so, that may not be the direction that you're, you're trying to head with this in terms of a punitive sort of impact financially. So, that's kind of that program in a nutshell. Want to look at some numbers and we'll get a chance to look at additional numbers for the other scenario as well. But so, as we, if we're talking about a reduced rate, what we have here, we've got three scenarios. There's current scenario, scenario one and scenario two. That current scenario, that's, that's where we are today. And so, I'm just going to walk you through real quick. We have six hundred and sixty-four spaces. Again, this is a Cox Avenue or Sears Alley. Currently, four hundred and sixty-four of those spots are available for daily, so that's just someone pulling into the deck, parking hourly. We have two hundred spots that are available for lease and of those two hundred spots, a hundred and eighty-five are leased at quote unquote market rate. Market rate for us is eighty-five dollars, that's just what we charge. That means that there's currently fifteen spots that could be leased that are vacant. Additionally, we have zero prices or zero spots at a reduced rate because we have no program in place, thus we have no reduced rate listed there. Our annual lease revenue is a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, almost a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, and this is just lease revenue. We additionally have revenue that comes in from the daily parking, which is about double of this, closer to two hundred thousand. So, that's our baseline. Now, we're going to compare to scenario one and scenario two. In scenario one, we decrease our daily spots from four sixty-four to three seventy-nine and we increase our total spots available for lease to two eighty-five. We no longer have a market rate lease because we're just providing the new reduced rate for everyone that wants a monthly pass. And so, we offer two hundred and eighty-five spots at a reduced rate of forty dollars a month. That gets us to a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars revenue estimated, just for the lease revenue, which is a decrease of about fif- fifty-two thousand dollars from where we are today. So, you're losing money overall, but you're providing a much lower entry point for monthly parking for everybody that wants it, that works downtown. In our next scenario, we, we just kind of increased the number of spots available in the program from two eighty-five to three thirty-five. You can see how those numbers play out, so we're bringing in a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We're bringing in more revenue than the prior option, but we're still below where we are currently. Do y'all follow me there? This again is a, just across the board reduction, anybody? One final note on this and then we'll move into the next scenario. Our total spaces for lease is capped. The Cox Avenue Deck and Forty Cox Avenue, those are, were bonded and because of those bonds, there's a public requirement to have a, that we can never have more than four hundred and fifty spots that are available for lease. So, we always have to have something available to the public, which is basically a hundred and fourteen, or two hundred and fourteen spots, excuse me.
So, Timmy said we could go up to four hundred and, what was the number?
Four fifty.
Four fifty is the theoretical.
Yep. All right, so that's the reduced for all scenario. We're going to move into our next scenario, which is adding some guardrails. And so, this program, this is a proposed program for low and moderate income individuals. So, in this particular instance, the eligibility, we're still talking about employees, you know, one mile radius from Pack Square is an example. Our income eligibility is lower moderate income and for this, we're using what we've used with other programs, which is the eighty percent AMI mark, which is similar to what we've done with the homeowner grant program as well as what you heard today on septic repair as well as rental assistance. So, we're trying to match, but also make sure that we're being cognizant of the thresholds and appealing to low and moderate income. For our industries, again, we're talking about those that are employed by any industry, but encouraging certain industries to apply. The reduced rate is going to be the same as what we talked about before, the locations are also the same, so Cox Avenue, we'll look at future decks in the future, but no designated parking areas. So, same model, just different eligibility. When we compare the scenarios and walking you through similar materials we just walked through, so that current scenario at the top, that top row, that's exactly the same from the prior slide. In scenario one, we're just going to walk across, you know, we've got of our six hundred and sixty-four spaces, three hundred and seventy-nine are available for daily, there's a total of two hundred and eighty-five spaces for lease, a hundred and eighty-five of those are at that market rate, which again is eighty-five dollars a month, but then we have a hundred spots available at forty dollars a month. In this scenario, your revenue increases from one eighty-eight, a hundred and eighty-eight thousand to two hundred and thirty-six thousand, which is an increase of forty-eight thousand dollars, which is primarily generated from just having new spots that are leased. In scenario two, same as before, but instead of doing a hundred reduced rate spots, we go to one fifty and then you can see that the increase goes from two thirty-six to two hundred and sixty K for a seventy-two thousand dollar increase from our current baseline, so increasing revenue that's coming in. This is a good thing, but one thing we wanted to share, these are two scenarios, I'm glad to take questions on those, but we also want you to see how this all kind of comes together as we look at overall cash flow. At this point, we're just comparing scenarios to give you a sense of how, how they work together, but there is an impact overall to the county. So, from our cash flow perspective, something that we have to bring into the fold is that there's an annual debt service payment on the Cox Avenue Deck of about one point two seven million dollars a year. And so, you can see that debt service and that debt, I mean, that's just how we would debt any other building. It's separate, it's separate from Forty Cox Avenue, which is additional debt. And what I would say about the debt, however, that debt service payment is with us regardless of whether or not you decide to proceed with an affordable parking program, but we did want you to be aware of it because it, it is a variable. Next up, we pay a management fee to Preferred Parking, that's about five percent of our revenue, so you can see it fluctuates depending on the scenario. When you compare lease revenue to, and subtract out our expenses, overall, because of the debt service, we're, we're seeing a, a negative. However, based on the scenario, because we're bringing in more lease revenue, you can see that overall our, our negative shrink, shrinks because we're leasing out more spots. We also do a comparison on the far right, which is total revenue, and so this includes our lease revenue plus our daily revenue and you can see our, our most, our best position is in scenario two, which is highlighted in blue, where we get to about negative eight hundred thousand dollars, so a, a delta. But again, based on a debt service payment that we'll be paying regardless because the deck exists to support Forty Cox Avenue. So, I'll pause there. I would also note, you know, we've highlighted this blue scenario, this is the scenario that staff feels is, is most appropriate. And this scenario specifically, you know, it's a low and moderate income base program similar to the ones that y'all, the Commission has approved recently in other areas. It provides a hundred and fifty spots at a reduced rate, but also maintains our existing a hundred and eighty-five spots at a market rate. Those hundred and fifty spots, we thought were a good starting point for the discussion... Those hundred and fifty spots, we thought were a good starting point for the discussion because we want to make sure that, one, we have spots available to the public, which we're, uh, but also that we don't negatively impact business operations, um, at Cox Avenue for county staff. I will tell you that there are, there are plans, um, in the works, uh, through the facility study and other things to increase the number of employees that will be at Forty Cox in the future, um, but those plans have not launched today. And so we do have some time to, you know, test out this program, put it in works, but also then come back to commission at a later date and sort of say, hey, we think we have an additional fifty spots, an additional hundred spots, or hey, actually, we think we need to preserve some of these spots so that people can use this, um, from a county government perspective.
Hey, I'm sorry, Tim. I keep getting confused. When you say options one and two, is option one all or option one low income?
Gotcha. So the, on this particular slide, these are all low income eligibility. Um, the difference would be the number of spots that are offered at a reduced rate. Um, so that column, basically in the middle, going from zero to a hundred to a hundred and fifty. So that's the only variable that changes on this slide, but it's all based on low income.
Okay. But there was a previous slide where you were giving option one and two, and those meant different things.
Yes. Those, the previous slide, I apologize for the confusion.
Okay.
Was if we offered reduced rates for everyone.
And in, in this slide, option one is, is all?
Is low income.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Going back, can we go back to the original?
Yeah.
Slide, I'm just, uh, that's, had the chart. Is it, uh, slide five? Okay.
I think this is where we are.
Okay. In this slide, option one is low income and option two is all.
Sorry. I'll label this better. So this slide is reduced rate scenarios for all.
For all.
No income eligible.
I get, I get it now.
Yep.
This was, these are options one and two, all within the category of everyone gets it.
Correct. Yep. So the main difference here is the number of spots at the reduced rate, uh, where it's, goes from zero to two eighty-five to three thirty-five. So that's, that's the only difference on this slide, but it's for all employees.
And then slide seven is just low income. Right? And there's two variations of how many spaces to do. Okay.
Correct. Yep.
Well, I appreciate you all taking a look at this. I think it seems to me from these numbers that it's definitely being underutilized. I think that's fair to say. And the, um, the option two for the low to moderate income, which I think is your recommendation as well, seems to be the one that makes sense to me because you're going to... Well, the revenue's still going to be there, but you're going to actually help an additional hundred and fifty at the, at the forty rate.
That's correct.
And it still leaves plenty for what you're talking about, for the, for the, for those who are coming to the Health and Human Services.
Tim, a question I have. Are we losing money on it today or are we making money?
Overall, um, we are losing money. There's no doubt. Our debt service payment is higher than the revenue we bring in.
Okay.
Period.
And, and again, just, so not contemplating any of these changes, how much more is our revenue? So the, the debt service is one point two million and our revenue is one point one million?
No.
Or is, or, just, could you just walk us through that again?
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. And... All right. And so what I don't have on this slide, so ma- make it a little confusing, but I'm going to try to do math in public. So our annual debt service is one point two seven. Today, our lease revenue, which is just our monthly revenue, is, uh, the difference between the annual debt service and that column three, which is one point one. So it's about, you know, right under two hundred thousand dollars in lease revenue.
Two hundred thousand.
Just lease. Correct. Additionally, we also have our daily, um, expenses, uh, which are about two hundred K as well. And so our total daily plus lease in the current environment is about four hundred K. And that fluctuates on a year-to-year basis, depending on who's driving. But yeah, it's about four hundred. Sorry.
So our expenses are one point two seven, our income's about four hundred thousand?
Correct.
And that's not like maintenance or anything like that. That's just debt service versus just the, uh, income. And just, just for the record, I voted against building this deck. And I think I was the only commissioner who did, but it... Anyway, um, all right. Other questions or comments?
Yeah, I guess I'm just wondering, I mean, a parking garage is never a moneymaker, right? I can't imagine.
You know, I mean, in some places it is. Rarely are public parking facilities going to make money. They're usually not. Some private ones might, but it's, they would not be going through the thought exercise we're having right now, for sure, because they would just be thinking about how do we make the most money from it. But still, you don't see a lot of these kind of facilities, you don't see the private sector going out and building these either because it's probably just, um, yeah, wouldn't be, it wouldn't be attractive.
If you want.
Well, it just definitely seems underutilized and feels like we should be doing, utilizing it in a better way and helping folks out.
I, I think that's fair. Two things I would say. One, um, I have one slide about process, if you'd like to talk about that. But two, you know, is, if you're thinking about str- you know, strategies for how to increase utilization, I think one strategy is rightfully lower the rate. You know, if you, I mean, that's a natural, like, supply and demand kind of, uh, approach. So I, I think that it makes sense from that standpoint, from a utilization perspective, but also if you're looking to benefit, uh, those that are low in income or... So I'll jump to process. Uh, we'll do this quickly and this can tweak, um, but the basic idea is employees or employers would be able to purchase parking passes. And so these are, you know, you swipe them at, at the gate and the gate opens. Uh, program is subject to availability. County has the right to minimize number of passes over time, things like that. Payments go directly to preferred parking, so there's no pass-through with the county. They're just paying, uh, directly to the vendor. Uh, there is a one-time parking pass fee, you know, twenty dollars to get the actual parking pass, but then after that, as long as you don't lose it, you're good to go. Um, it's an online application process and you can actually do this now, um, regardless of the reduced rate, but if you go to the preferred's website, you can go to our deck and apply online for a spot. And so it would be the same type of program. You would just provide whatever, uh, documents were necessary based on what commission decides. Our recommendation is some type of proof of downtown employment and income. So that could be, you know, a, a pay stub or a certification from an employer. Uh, you pick up the pass with preferred, you have to recertify your employment on some schedule. We say every twelve months. You could be more frequent if you chose. And then overall, staff will continue to look at this and see if you need to increase spots or decrease spots or do something different, um, in general. Our next steps are pretty straightforward. We're basically asking for your feedback today on, you know, is this the right rate? Is this the right number of passes to offer? Other generalized feedback, you know, is this process convoluted, that type of thing? But in general, we're trying to keep it simple and launch as quickly as possible if commission wants to proceed. And so we think realistically, this could be a fall twenty twenty-two program.
You know, I really appreciate the staff looking at this and thinking about this. You know, it's, um, as your numbers show, like, just parking by itself can be a really significant cost for people who work, work downtown and, um, just in this kind of environment of like all these different costs going up for people. If there's something we can do to like meaningfully address any of their kind of cost of living, then I think that's, I think that's a great thing to look at. I, I have kind of an initial, and I, I appreciate the two options too, to think about, different ways doing it. I kind of have an initial lean on it and for one of them. But, um, I would, you know, I would kind of encourage us to take some time to, to hear from the community about this because I do think this is a topic of actually, especially now that there's a proposal that's going to go forward, I think there'll be a lot of interest in this. And so I'd sort of like to hear the community's feedback, um, around it. I think there's some, yeah, there's some pros and cons to both of the options, but I'd kind of like to, I bet we're going to hear from people who work downtown about this. I think, I think favorably, there might be some tweaks or something suggested, but, um, anyway, I think they would both be good, but I, I'm not ready to advocate for one or the other. The one idea I would share, and I've shared this with staff, um, that I would just, uh, I'm not advocating to incorporate this initially because I do think there's some value in keeping it as simple as we can in some ways, but, um, I anticipate there'll be a lot of interest in this and a lot of participation in it if we do either of these options. When I kind of initially thought about this idea, I thought about, you know, because this, this is a big deck, right? This is a really large deck. And whenever I've been in there, you just notice, gosh, you know, the upper levels of this deck and even the middle parts of the deck are just, are just empty. And it is kind of like, you know, we've spent all this money to build this thing. Let's at least try to get as much public benefit out of it as we can. So my, my original concept was like, why not offer like a really discounted parking for the middle and upper areas of the deck? It's kind of like when you go to the Asheville Airport, right? There's short-term parking, which is kind of expensive, but you're just in and out, right? And then there's longer-term parking, which is less convenient. It's a little further away, but you get, you know, you pay a much lower rate for it. So maybe the low level of the deck is like your regular rate, and then the upper, middle and upper level, it's like you get discounted parking, but if people are coming to work, to work all day long, you know, you don't necessarily want to tie up your best, most convenient spaces for people who are parking for eight or ten hours. You want those for kind of people coming in and out of running errands. So the idea is like, give a discounted pass, but in return for, if you're parking long-term, you know, you would, you would park in these middle and upper levels. So I would just say, I'm not advocating for incorporating that idea initially because it would make it a bit more complicated to administer. But if this is as popular as I think it might be, in the long run, I do think it may be worth consideration because if this deck is all of a sudden now not empty all the time, and in fact, it's quite well utilized, then taking some steps to preserve the lowest levels for those who are using it for short visits, I think may be worth the effort. So that's just an idea I would share for the future. Other thoughts, comments, questions?
I think I already said, I appreciate the effort put into this and, um, I'm, I'm leaning toward the staff recommendation there, but certainly open to hearing other ideas with it, but I think it's a good way to proceed. Thank you.
I appreciate that. And, uh, Chair, I appreciate you bringing up community members. We've, we've had some initial discussions with community orgs, um, like the Downtown Association, Air, and others, uh, just to get a sense of Go Local, their thoughts. But I think we could certainly continue those discussions too.
Yeah. Great. Well, great informational presentation. So we'll have this back on the agenda at some point in the near future for further guidance. And I mean, I don't hear anybody, uh, it sounds like it's one of these options, right? We just got to choose which one and how many spaces, so.
Yeah, that's the intent, but if you want to go back and get some more community input, we can do that and then bring this back in a couple of months for launch.
Yeah. I think that's fine. I mean, I think we'll hear more from people. I mean, I know, I appreciate y'all reaching out to groups. I, I think there'll be, I think we'll hear more and that maybe even, you know, one of our next meetings, I think we'd probably be ready to vote. And we can't really vote in these meetings, so, yeah. Yeah.
If you had any things for us to tweak, we will build that in and go back and research and then come back for the final.
Sounds great. Thanks, Tim. All right. The last item on the agenda is the DFI kickoff and Tim Love will remain and be joined by Matt Cable to present this item.
Well, um, you're not going to hear from me much today. Sarah Odeo is here with us today. She's on Zoom virtually. And so I just wanted to introduce Sarah. Sarah's the project manager for the, the two contracts, uh, that Buncombe County has with the UNC School of Government Development Finance Institute, or DFI for short. Sarah's here to talk a little bit about what she's been up to since the last time you saw her. And the, the main issue is she's been wrapping up other projects so that she could get fully focused on our work here in Buncombe, which again is two separate contracts that Sarah will walk through. So Sarah, can we do a test to make sure we can hear you?
About the proposal and when we actually have a contract in place and can start talking about the project. So, um, it's, it's a great time. Let's see if I can share this screen. A brief presentation just to orient you all to what the next, you know, really year is going to look like through this process. So I'm still disabled, so we're working on that. It's been two years in Zoom and, uh, we're still figuring it all out, I think. I can get started on just the background. So for anyone that's in the audience and for any commissioners that are starting to kind of tuning in a little bit more to what we're working on, um, so I'm with the, the Development Finance Initiative, um, and we are a program of the School of Government. So the UNC Chapel Hill School of Government advises local governments all across North Carolina on just about anything that you would all be involved in. And so here, whoop, I'm going to put up my presentation. This is exciting. Okay. All right. Great. Should be able to see just the slide. Um, so as I was saying, the School of Government really just advising on anything and everything that a local government would need to touch. And the Development Finance Initiative, we are focused exclusively on real estate development and finance. And our work covers, um, focusing on attracting private investment for projects that meet the public interest, which is really relevant when talking about affordable housing and trying to stretch public dollars as far as possible, public property in order to achieve and bring in more affordable housing for households at various income levels. So there are two scopes that we're working on. Um, and I do want to treat them as two different scopes, uh, because they're going to have different timelines and we will usually be coming to you around the same time, uh, but the tracks are different and the work is different. So the first scope is the affordable housing feasibility. We're calling this a phase one because it is really just the beginning of taking a look at the properties that the county, um, has control over and seeing what the opportunities are for affordable housing development. And so we are going to do a high-level feasibility analysis. We do a housing needs assessment. What are the needs of your community? We look at the sites. We take a look at what's possible within the physical and the regulatory at a high level, so we don't really start digging in into actual conceptual plans at this point. And we do the financial feasibility from high level. So the goal of this is to be able to help you compare between sites. So you, on this site, you could achieve X, Y, Z for certain dollars. On this site, you could achieve X, Y, Z for certain dollars. And you could take a look at it and see which one is a better fit for what you're hoping to do. A big part of this is stakeholder engagement. And in the phase one, we are very much focused on internal, really understanding what the board is looking for, understanding what staff is looking for, understanding what your employees are comfortable with, given that these are spaces, um, that they occupy and share and are next to, right? And then from there, we're going to help you all identify and prioritize the sites that you like best for housing development, that you want to move forward with. And we take that and we go into a phase two, which looks a lot like what we're going to be doing for Ferry Road. So I think a Ferry Road is what the phase two will look like for the affordable housing feasibility. So leveraging on the second scope, leveraging for Ferry Road, what you all have already done, there's been considerable, incredibly thoughtful work done by your staff, by Equinox, and we're going to build on that. And we're going to do a more detailed feasibility. And we're going to do a more detailed feasibility analysis in this case. So really getting into the site, really getting into what the entitlements need to look like in order to make this work. We're doubling up some work here with the housing needs assessment, but we're also looking at other markets. So thinking about other commercial uses that would complement the site. Financial feasibility, taking a look at what we could attract from the private sector, given public investment, and really modeling a, a public-private partnership for this site or public-private partnerships for this site. There will be extensive community engagement at this point. So once, you know, these plans are more refined, going back out to the public with more refined plans and ideas for the site. And from there, we actually go out and we help you identify a development partner through a solicitation process. And then once you identify a partner, we help you get into negotiations with them, support you in all of the key deal points in order to make sure that your public interests are secured in any agreement that you enter into with a developer. So any questions about these scopes? I can keep moving.
One question I have is, can both of these things occur simultaneously, or concurrently, rather?
We're going to look at a timeline here and you can see how they occur in a parallel fashion. Just to give you a visual of what the feasibility analysis is, because I said, I spoke previously about kind of the high level and the more detail. But really, it's all about structuring deals that are feasible for the public and the private sector. And so that means having a deal in place that, you know, reflects the market, fits within the physical and the regulatory constraints of that site, that can attract private dollars, thinking about investors, thinking about lenders, that if needed, inserts public investment. And ultimately, that meets those public interests. So a project isn't feasible unless it is achieving those public interests. So a private developer is thinking about all of those other things. We're ensuring that feasibility also reflects the public and what you all as a board want to see happen. And so looking a little bit more at the Ferry Road site where we're jumping off of. So as I said, you know, you all have done really a lot of wonderful work to this point. And in April, the commission endorsed these elements that we're going to be working off of. So of this site, concert, I'm sorry. I, I keep hearing kind of like an echo. I don't know if someone's trying to speak or, or so, maybe some indicate.
We hear the echo when we speak, but not when we do.
Okay, because I hear just echo when someone speaks. All right. Now? All right. So for conservation, thinking about conserving 55% to 60% of the 137-acre site. So that's, that's pretty high level, right? So as part of the Phase Two on the Ferry Road, what we're looking at here is, what is obviously, Equinox already did work on sort of these critical conservation pieces. But what are those additional conservation pieces that, you know, maximize development opportunity, but also ensure that these are, it's properly conserved and is something for the community to, to have for years to come, right? And so what's the best way to balance that? In addition, uses. And thinking about these uses in a phased manner, because it is a large site, but the developable portion isn't actually that large, but it's still considerable. And it's different housing types. So you all voted to have a diversity of housing types, including multifamily, missing middle, and single family. And just direct quote, at least two-thirds of new construction priced at affordable. And, you know, the quote was workforce, but I know that really means middle-income price points. And so our work will be to really define what that means. What is affordable? What are those income levels? Where can you focus public investment? And thinking about a mix of rental and homeownership. And then, of course, you know, an inclusion of some commercial elements, this being really a housing-forward development, but some commercial elements that may be harmonious with the residential uses. But really recognizing that this is meant to be a mixed-income diverse community. For the Affordable Housing Feasibility, you know, we're at the very beginning, right? And so the initial emphasis being on county-owned properties, previously identified by county staff for us. But we're going to expand our scope a little bit to see if there are any additional sites that are actually suitable for low-income housing tax credit development. So this first part of it is really going to be more broad. Hey, let's look at these sites you already own, but what other opportunities might exist? And so the timeline that you all were asking about. So in the light blue is the Affordable Housing Feasibility timeline. And this, what you see here is the Phase One. So right now, we just got a contract executed this morning, woo-hoo, very exciting, for the feasibility, the housing feasibility. And so we're starting to examine those current conditions. But if I'm totally honest, we had a contract executed for Ferry Road a couple of weeks ago. And so we started this dual work at that point as well. Because there are efficiencies in gathering, you know, GIS data to really examine all of the county all at once, examine all of your planning documents, and really understand what those goals are here. So this through to the spring, March 2023, is when we would be back to you all with the findings of this Affordable Housing Feasibility. We, you will see me before then, because I will probably come in front of you to talk about the housing needs assessment and to discuss whether you see opportunities for additional public engagement and in what form. The Phase Two would then kick off at that point if you want to select a site, if you're prepared to select a site and proceed. So Phase Two starts when you have site control over a property that you would like to proceed solicitation with. Now Ferry Road, we started. A lot of these things are happening at the same time. But we are working with different people. So on the site analysis, we are doing this high-level stuff for Phase One. Phase Two will bring in an architect for Ferry Road. We're going to be working with Equinox and LAS, Lord X Sergeant, to really dig into this conceptual plan further. And so we're doing it all kind of at the same time. As we get deeper into the process, the overlap kind of splits a little bit because it gets more in-depth. And as you can see, you know, the public engagement process. So with Ferry Road in orange here on the timeline, if I can draw your eye to, let me see if I have a mouse, to this point of concerted, this dark orange, which is very focused public engagement for Ferry Road. And this is when we would go out to the public with these more refined conceptual plans and numbers attached to them, right? And after that point, you come, we come back to you with those results. And there may be additional site analysis, there may be additional financial analysis that you all might want to conduct. And then we would continue after we give you program recommendations if needed. So we come back, we say, this is what we heard from the public. We made these adjustments. Here are some recommendations. And then you'll get a chance to reflect, go out to the public again if wanted. And then we go out to solicitation. And that's when we would start to identify a developer. And so we're looking at late summer, early fall of 2023 to be out looking for a developer for Ferry Road, or developers for Ferry Road. So as you can see, a lot of overlap, but really moving more aggressively on Ferry Road because you're a lot further along on that. So any questions about the timeline?
Commissioners, we wanted this to be an opportunity for you to ask questions. And so we're going to try to navigate Zoom by muting it and unmuting it, but we don't want the technology to prevent the questions. So if you have them, we'd like you to put them on the table. We'll manage the echo and work from there.
I guess, I'm hesitating. I guess my concern or feedback is, is just the, the length of, of time with things. You know, I, I feel confident in this board's dedication to furthering affordable housing. Even honored really in our commitment and understanding of issue, the understanding of these properties and, you know, kind of what our goals are and the need is for abundant housing. And it's only a need that we can, it's only a problem we can solve by building our way out of. So when I look at that timeline, I just get a sense of urgency in the back of my head. So I don't know if there's anything we can do to push the timeline further would be my feedback on that slide.
It does seem like a long time, but I, I really want to emphasize how long the real estate development process will take and that this process itself is helping to mitigate risk for the development community and save them some time as well. So there's overlap in the development process with this timeline. For example, you would be getting the site entitled, right? Getting the zoning in place. If you select a developer and then you go through that process, then they go through that process. You're now having the public kind of adjust to who they're dealing with. They're really vetting this developer along with going through the zoning process. And so that can get extended for a very long time. The same is true for the financial analysis component. So thinking about what your public investment is. When we go out to solicitation, you all are going to have made a very clear commitment about what you're willing to do for Ferry Road. If you leave that open and vague and you expedite this and you just pick a developer, you're going to end up in negotiations for the same amount of time, if not longer, trying to figure out what your public investment should be. So while this does seem long, in the big picture of what it takes to get development done, this is actually saving time for the developer. It's saving them money that they're not spending, trying to figure out what it is you all want and trying to work with zoning and the planning board to get something done. So those are just two examples. There are a lot of other small ways that it's done. I'll say just the community engagement aspect with you all spearheading it, really builds a lot of trust in the process and what's going to happen there. And if you leave that to the future, that can also extend the process as well.
Okay, so just a follow-up question. And I apologize if I missed this in it. So this, this schedule for the Ferry Road property does actually have like the zoning entitlement, for example, is embedded within this schedule?
It's embedded in the schedule.
As part of the, which of the categories? The site analysis or the?
Yeah. So site analysis. It's really that financial and the strategy. So early on, we start to recognize what it's going to need. So we start working on it internally and we get the ball rolling. Because that is one of the riskier parts of a process for developers to say, hey, we want you to come in and, oh, here's the property and you rezone it and let's figure out how much we want to put into it. So all of that is baked into this process.
Well, I, yeah, I appreciate it. I know, I know nothing is ever as quick as we want it. But I do think it's more important that we do it really well. And, and this is building confidence in me and I hope it'll build confidence in the community too and that we are able really to impact this for the long term beyond just these initial projects. So I think it's going to pay off dividends.
Hey, one, one other follow-up though on this, Sarah, too. And I, and I'll be, you know, we're all, we're all share Parkers' impatience to see all this stuff move ahead. But I mean, honestly, I would feel like, looking at this, if we can hold to this schedule, I would call it a big victory and, you know, that would be great. But I mean, just on the, on the, this is kind of a detailed question around the, like, the zoning and process. For example, though, you've been doing all this analysis on Ferry Road, thinking about what could be there, the mix of housing types and things like that, which will de-risk it, as you said, for future potential development partners. But to, to what extent, and remind me, is this in the city zoning jurisdiction? Or it is in the city zoning jurisdiction, right? So I mean, this is ultimately some, probably some big conditional use zoning proposal, right? So is it really possible to do that process before you select a developer? And then they're going to have a lot of input too, right? I mean, it's going to be much better than if we hadn't done the planning. But it seems like there'll still be a whole nother round of land use and permitting and stuff that happens after you select the developer and then they truly make the development plan real. Or does DFI, through its process, really bake it that detailed? Then it's, at that point, it's more of like, there is a very, very specific development plan that you're basically just kind of asking developers to step into and, and build and finance?
Is that there's, there are going to be a lot of permits that the developer needs to pull? So all the permits the developer will need to pull. We're talking about permissible uses and density. And so part of my work, I haven't dug into it yet, what those uses are at the moment, what it could be, thinking about all of that and making changes if necessary. So given that it's such a big site, thinking about a planned development and there's some flexibility in what that could be, we're, our goal here is to be as specific as possible without eliminating the creativity of a developer. So you all, when you go out to a developer, will have a clear sense of the range, you know, the number of units for each type that you can expect. The developer will then be expected to come back and kind of try to meet or exceed those expectations for development. But when we think about zoning, when we think about what needs to be in place to reduce, so never eliminate risk because risk is inherent in development. But to reduce that risk, we think about what kind of, what we could have in place to ensure that they don't, that they know that they're going to be able to build at least 200 multifamily units on pad A, for example. That is just an example, I haven't dug into it. So I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah, no, it does. It does. That, that's great. I just, a couple of other questions. So, so this is Ferry Road. So we do have these other, you know, amazing county-owned properties that we're excited about. So will we not start the process of doing development analysis on those until after Ferry Road is launched?
No. So we've already started. We only got a contract for that today, but we've already started. And so you're going to see us in early spring, I'd say February, March of next year with kind of options for the sites and letting you select a site. But that work all begins now, whether it's the county-owned ones or whether there are additional sites that, you know, we haven't even identified yet. So that's all beginning now, that process.
Okay. Okay, so, so because on the chart, it's just like, it's just the Ferry Road timeframe. But, but are, am I understanding it that the, the other properties will also be kind of like going through the same process at the same time? It's not just Ferry Road, it's the, it's the downtown properties as well and potentially if something else came under our radar?
Not just downtown, but the Affordable Housing Generally Feasibility process. The orange is Ferry Road. So what I hope that you can see on the screen, and I, I hope it's not, not showing, is that this is a concurrent process. And so we are doing a lot of work at the same time on both of these projects.
Okay. I thought the, I thought the, like, the Ferry Road is the orange. I thought the blue was like, kind of like, more of like the county market analysis and things like that. But it's other, it's other specific county properties. Okay.
Let me go back.
Not reading it right.
So it's this, this piece where, you know, staff has already identified some sites, but we are going to broadly look at other sites that might be low-income housing tax credit eligible. So it's this Affordable Housing Feasibility Phase One is that light blue process that's happening concurrently. So by early next year, you should have an idea of which sites you would want to proceed on. And then that light blue dashed line is that Phase Two. So if you have site control- So if you have site control of a site or, and you're ready to go and you know you want to proceed on that, then we'll get into the more site-specific analysis, like what we're doing on Ferry Road. But there are some time savings, right? Because we're not starting from scratch like we are with Ferry, where we're trying to like learn it all before we get started. We will have done all of that phase one. So in that phase two, we'll be able to really hit the ground running on that.
All right. This is, this is my last question, at least for now. And the people who serve on the Affordable Housing Committee would know what I'm going to ask. The, so for each of the county properties we have, we have these downtown existing owned assets. And then we have the big Ferry Road, kind of more suburban type of property. Are we going to, is part of your analysis going to be whether each of the sites or any of the sites can potentially host a 4% li tech project?
Yes.
And is that, and I guess related, I know you're just starting, but do you have some, any sense of that now? Or is that part, is that just one of the questions you would begin to ask as you look at each of the properties?
I mean, I would say it would be silly of us not to be thinking about the low-income housing tax credit, whether it be the 9% or the 4%, because it is the largest incentive subsidy, whatever you want to call it, for affordable housing development in the country. And it produces more privately owned affordable units than any other program. It's producing more units than any public or private programs at this point. So we have to look at what we call li tech, low-income housing tax credits, as part of any affordable housing conversation.
Terrific. All right, commissioners, any other questions, comments at this time? Well, Sarah, we're, we're really excited that your team's engaged. We really appreciate the county staff working to bring y'all into this process. So thanks for being with us today. And we really, really look forward to hearing your ideas and analysis and, and collaborating going forward.
And I'll see you all at the end of this year with some housing needs assessment and market analysis. And if anyone wants to speak to me one-on-one, please reach out. I would love to hear what your interests are directly and, and have a fun conversation about affordable housing.
All right. Sounds great. Have a great evening. Bye-bye. All right, Tim, Matt, anything else on this item?
The last thing I would stress, you know, Sarah will be virtual, but she has plans and a little less than a month to be here. And we'll be walking around, looking at sites. And so I want you to know that there's like tangible steps that are coming in the very near future and we'll keep you informed. But if you ever have questions, just let us know.
All right. Sounds great. Thanks, y'all. All right, that's everything that was on our agenda. So let's take a break and try to get started, you know, shortly after five.